Greetings, everyone. I am a public school district one thirty-two Board of Education. Board meeting has started. John, may I have a roll call?
Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? She stepped out.
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, Love is here, just step down real quick.
Well, ma'am, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval agenda. Suggested motion here via nearby moved at the Board of Education approve agenda for September twenty twenty-four. Read the session as presented. May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by this. Story, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. John, will you call?
Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? Approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes. Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Community. Tonight on our report, we will have academic improvement updates from each building. They will be talking about their focus for the year. Some of the challenges they have and what's their plan to address them. We will start with Burr Oak Academy with Principal David Brown.
Good evening. So tonight I'm here to talk about strategies that we're going to use at Burr Oak Academy this year. I spent a long time this summer working with the team here. I worked here with the team and we identified after last year's results, you know, some key strategies that we want to implement this year. So hopefully that this will spell out one key strategy of our menu. So we knew our focus needed to be reading and math, we knew we needed to grow in those areas. One of the things that Dr. Alexander asked us to really focus on this year is improving our tier-one quality instruction. So that's basically instruction we provide on a daily basis. So when we thought about our next steps was how do we improve what teachers are doing inside the classroom so that it impacts students? And then the biggest thing is how do we monitor that? So some of these areas that you'll see here, one of the things we identified is that we can use data more productively. In order to do that, we recognize that our data sources were sort of here, here, and here. Now we're doing this. So we get to one source universally across the grade level or across the school, which is Burr Oak Academy. And then we make sure that every student is getting equitable instruction. And then the second one was staff and student attendance. The third is rate to retain and continually seek high quality teachers. So strategies we're using, we're establishing assessment procedures. I have another PowerPoint that I can share with you all. It lays this out, it establishes a clear-cut path to where we want to be so we can assess our students more routinely and gather data and make decisions, rather than just waiting for N W A to come once every three or two and a half months or so. Targeted tutorial program, we're revamping our tutorial program. Are we servicing the students in the best way or are we just servicing all? So we're really going to focus on data and what we're going to focus on is the students that are right there on the prospect grade level, we're going to target, and we're going to push them over the edge while providing other support and throughout the day for the rest. Interventionist, this is huge. So this has been a huge success so far. We have a block of time where we, every student, every day, not every student, sorry, we identify student every day we'll visit in interventionist. There's two periods of time for each grade level. So two sets of time for kindergarten. So we'll reach about thirty students a day in that intervention month. That's targeted interventionists after we found out that what we're doing wasn't working. That's just the Burr Oak Academy. Who's next?
Mr. John Brown.
We seem to be missing to ensure you under your second point.
Use your microphone.
I'm sure, thank you. To ensure, where are you, what are you trying to ensure? Where are you at? I'm sorry.
Number two. Like our interventionist. Connection tools to ensure.
Yeah. To ensure that we're making decisions based on data, not just based on like a shot in the dark.
And can you talk a little bit more about what is, you talked about narrowing the path for data intervention. What exactly is the narrow two? From what to what?
So the narrow of like, if you wanted to put it in the standard shot, pre-assessment, instruct, reassess, make a decision academically where the student goes, do they reteach or visit? Or do they be moved to the interventions? And so at that point in time, we've already established three check-in points over those particular skills and standards.
And over what period of time?
Well, it can be, it can be. So our skills checklist, the one I'm looking at implementing for consistently across the school can be administered by the teacher, start mental, and it can be administered first day of a new unit, the last day, it can be measured every day. They have that luxury of using that sheet to monitor. Meaning that tool.
The teachers, the teachers have that.
And we worked on it, we're right now developing that. And it's going to be very thorough, you'll be able to see it quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next, we will have Burr Oak School. And that will be led by Assistant Principal Mr. Kenyatta Greer.
So what we did was we identified a couple areas that we're going to focus on this year. So we're going to focus on growth in reading and also growth in math. So you'll see that we have our growth areas. Our focus is going to be in differentiating instructions, meet diverse learners, their needs. And then you see the goal that we have. Okay.
Do we have a presentation?
I did not have the opportunity to set it up with writing to the board meetings, but I was able to see when the file board underlined.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so then we have, so each one of these has a growth area and then also a goal attached to it. So we want to improve reading comprehension and close efficiency gaps. So that is our goal in reading. And then we have after that is our strategies to accomplish that. That will be on the next slide. So the way we're going to do this is we are going to implement small group instruction based on skill levels and then also improve, incorporate that in reading and comprehension exercises, use interactive literacy tools and centers and then on part of the monitoring. And that is for reading and then we also have our goals for math as well.
And what can you, can you? Interested in that part.
Yeah, so for math, this again is just our growth area, our foundational math skills. And then our conceptual understanding, problem solving, and then of course is to improve overall math proficiency throughout the year and focusing on our small groups. And we're focusing also on just improving through our learning centers and through our assessments that we have. Okay. So math centers and our differentiated activities, our regular formative assessments, our grades, our ten forms, our exit tickets, our polls, our class discussions. And then we have our manipulatives that we have for our understanding and our time fact activities as well.
Okay, and that concludes our update.
Question, asking questions, Ms. Love?
I don't really have a question, but this is excellent, fantastic. It covers everything and it covers all the children in the school. You know, differentiate, differential, teaching and stuff with children. This is what will improve the scores of the children and the teachers. Because the teachers know that they have to be busy, not so busy, but they have to know what they're doing in teaching and monitoring the students. And see, so they will know whenever they finish at the end of the school year where their students are. It won't be a guessing thing, they don't have to worry about how the testing is going to go because they have been teaching the entire year. They got their small groups. This is fantastic. And I do suggest that maybe Burr Oak Academy look at this and use it with the primary students so that when those kids come over to Burr Oak, they have, they already know how to work with this. And so this, and, well, I haven't been on music because it all ties in whenever I read it, that yours is the model that everybody should be looking at. Mr. Ivy follows through of their departmentalize so they don't do as much as Burr Oak does. Primary building, you know, you're kind of lacking because it doesn't tell you what the teachers are teaching, it said whatever they're teaching in the classroom. But that's how satisfactory. This one tells me exactly what they're going to be doing, exactly. They're going to have their centers, they're going to have their different groups, the small groups, the large groups. They're going to have different testing, assessing, and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
So I have a question. Do you know what percentages are we now? So where are we going? I understand all of the strategies that we're going to utilize. Do you know where we are, where we're going? Yes, in regards to both.
We do, we actually talked about that yesterday in our school improvement meeting. We went over the school improvement plan, the teachers, and we discussed our numbers and where we are. Where we need to go from. And we also came up with, the school improvement team has a number that we have as far as increasing.
So I was, I know you did your goal plan and you said increase what, five percent, three percent? How we, with the squad, if we had terms of talking about the N W A, because remember last meeting, I was like, the staff was going to go back and say, what is their plan? He asked, everybody have a school improvement plan and you have the district plan. But what is their plan? What, how will we see growth there in the schools?
So we just finished N W A. We just finished N W A and there's still a few students who have to finish it. So we have not formulated what the N W A goals are. But remember, N W A is not the same type of assessment as I A R, what we basically should be doing. So N W A is really a project monitoring tool that provides the teacher with periodic information on how they can drive their instruction. One thing that we've been doing this year is that we look at instruction differently. So the reality is when we're doing tier-one instruction, what everybody gets, if that's not solid at the district level, it is not going to be solid in the catch. What that means is we've had to change our practice and our mentality at the district level to say, what do we expect every student in this district to know and be able to do by the time they leave? And so that's my question to my administrative team, from the curriculum instruction department to academics, to the building. So when we start talking about what are students expected to know and be able to do, we have to look at what's our curriculum. Well, even before you get to curriculum, what are the standards that students will be tested on? So that's what they are expected to be able to do. Then you're looking at what exactly do we have in place? How are we assessing students to see if they're making progress? What tools are we using? So N W A is just that, we take it three times a year and it's a benchmark. However, now we have a unit assessment. So every unit we have, so the kids, before they start the unit, they take an assessment. The teacher implements the lessons. They have small group instruction and interventions. And then at the end of the unit, which could be six to eight weeks, we take the post-assessment. That's the type of data we're looking at to see are our students closing the achievement gap. N W A as an adaptive assessment is more about identifying individual student standards and goals for them versus saying, we want to have forty-five percent of our students meeting their goal target. Just because you're meeting your N W A goal target does not mean you're closing the gap. So that's why we've had to change the way we look. If we put all of our eggs in a basket for N W A, guess what's going to happen? We're going to remain low because that's not what N W A is designed for. So we've changed our practice and just like Ms. Love said, how do we create the standard for everybody and then provide that differentiated support to bring all students to it? So that's the difference in where we are this year. Utilizing multiple measures of data. Again, we get data from N W A in September. We don't get data again to the end of January, February. The first of March, we start to take the state assessment. So again, we're looking differently at how we present information to students, how we privately monitor to see if they're getting it, and then what strategies do we implement to say, this kid didn't get it the first time, what are we going to do differently? So I think we have a different focus on how we're looking at this. And that's what's going to change it, not N W A.
Okay.
But my question is, so the screen presentations, they always change. And I'm trying to figure out why it is the continuum and not isolating. We're not trying to isolate the system. So we should see something across the board. I'm a little worried about Burr Oak Academy just from what I've seen. And this is a personal thing, I came to this thing with an intent of seeing scores in this this being a place that is exciting to live and to draw people to the school district. When I just checked the reference again, we are like, if I don't commit to this, school system is not that.
So two things, I'll address two things. So everybody starts with the same expectation, that's the district-wide expectation. Every building operates within the district, but the parameters of every building are different. K to two instruction looks different than three to five, then looks different in six to eight. So although we create a continuum, when we start talking about primary literacy, when we start talking about foundational math skills, the way we roll that out is different in each building. So you will see a difference in what strategies look like. I'll give you a perfect example, in K to two, they can receive one hundred and twenty minutes a day of literacy instruction. So that literacy blocks looks totally different than in middle school, it's like fifty minutes. So that's why you see some differences. Are there areas of growth in every school? Absolutely. But part of this presentation talked about what are, what are your challenges in your building? I'll give you an example. In the third to fifth grade building last year, we had subs in just about every class in fourth and fifth grade. So right now, aside from us trying to teach that grade level instruction, we're trying to play catch-up because you had some kids who had a sub and hopefully they had the same sub who was quality for a whole year. So it, it looks a little different. And this is the start of something new. Part of tier-one instruction is making sure your teachers get it. The reality is that a lot of teachers are used to teaching in one format. And that's possibly the way that they learn, which could have been twenty years ago. Standards are different, kids are different, expectations are different, materials are different. So we're taking that step to get our staff to part. So just as Mr. Brown and Mr. Greer said, it's a learning process. It's building the steps, these levels. We're getting teachers to say, you can't just create a lesson based on what's in the book, your teacher's guide. That's not how you create a lesson. You create a lesson based on the data you've created, collected from who's sitting in front of you. And then you use the teacher's guide as a resource to pull material to deliver it. So this is a new process. We don't have specific data, one, because we're still finishing the N W A. But two, I think we have to look at assessment differently. N W A for a long time was utilized as the end-all, be-all assessment. But that's why the whole Illinois, the state of Illinois failed because we utilized N W A. That's why most of the state has moved to I R A and to other assessments because it's truly aligned to how we test at the state level. So we use N W A just as a data point. It's not the end-all, be-all. And what we use that to say is, here's a preliminary list of standards that you can work with a student on. But N W A says, we expect the kid to notice by the end of fifth grade. If that kid came to fifth grade at the first grade level, you're never going to achieve it. So what we utilize the data for is to say, this is where we need to structure our support. The second part is October, I believe October thirtieth, the state of Illinois releases the I A R data and some of the designations. It's totally different and drastically different. And it's a drastically different conversation than what we're talking about with N W A. And it creates a false positive, or depending on how you look at it, a false negative when you're talking about student data. Your student, your N W A would tell you that seventy-five percent of your class are meeting or exceeding their standards or they're meeting growth targets. But the growth target, if you meet your growth target, that means you stayed the same. That doesn't mean you increased and you grew. So again, we made the decision to look at N W A as a tool, as a support, and not our end-all, be-all. So that's why we don't have N W A data up here today comparing contracts.
I just want to say this, I do, let's try to say never, never. But as far as if we give these assessments, even though it's a progress monitoring piece, you, kids are at one specific point, they in the tiers, but they may be in the first percentile, second. But they will show growth out of that percentile with these tests and that progress monitoring. So I understand what's the numbers, I do understand the strategies that you are using. However, if my child is say, okay, you're at the thirtieth percentile, these are some of the skills aligned with the standards that my child need. So therefore, if I'm at the thirty percentile, the teachers follow the strategies that he just showed us. Then from the thirty percentile, my child probably can get to the forty percentile. He may not, it's not the tendability of it, but I know he grew. He still may be at a fourth grade now compared to being at the sixth. But at least he showed some growth because we're waiting for data and you're saying we not showing, what you're saying, they will always stay low, so we not looking at growth. You have to look at growth. We have to have some data point, like you said. The students need to know, this is where you are, this is your goal. You are in the fifth percentile, but let's see if we can get to the tenth. Is that going to be at grade level? No, it's not, but they grew and kids are happy because they're seeing data that's making a change. That's all I'm going to say.
Kimbrough's driving?
Sure, a couple things, first of all, we can use the mic inside. All right. So good afternoon, first of all, I want to say how excited I am about just the conversation and making sure that what we are focusing on is that academic growth and attainment. It's up between those pieces right there and we want to continue to tap into that conversations that we have weekly with Dr. Alexander, force toward that particular goal also. With that being said, I'm going to hop in and let you know, I'm misconstraining myself on our strategies for academy. And one of the big pieces when we look at our instructional focus that we have there, one of the things we always have with this and dealing with, the gradual release model is the particular strategy that we use for kids that it's been researched, it's proven to help kids grow, it's been proven to help them learn to track data for themselves and for teachers as a whole. So we had a couple pieces I haven't, I'm just going to hit with this in just a second. But this particular model, again, it's taught by our kids. Again, I mentioned that of tracking the data, forming small groups, instruction. If we know, we work with our kids, they have them, they pair up with each other. Often our kids learn things from each other that we don't necessarily do in our own instructional delivery from our teachers. So it's another piece in which we're using to meet kids where they are in order to help bridge that academic success.
So in looking at the graphic that we have on the screen for you, you'll notice that it is broken down into three deliberate sections. And when we talk about lesson planning and what we expect of our teachers delivering to our kids is the I do, we do, you do model. And we practice this with our staff. We're giving them the tools they need to be able to write these lesson plans broken down in these three chunks so that our kids are met where they are, they're met where they are in M T S S with the tiers, and they're met where they are in the classroom and with their teacher each day. Now, this model allows itself to be changed as the lesson changes. But it also allows teachers to stay within their spoken sequence and be able to deliver lessons in a way that they can ensure all students are getting each standard before jumping into the next one.
So what does that mean for us? We've talked around identifying some challenges and spheres of growth for us. It's very personal about this data collection, it's paramount. This data that we use, whether it's going to be information with our N W A, whether it's going to be our unit assessments, whether it's going to be quizzes, chapter tests, it's going to be informal assessments or formal assessments. This is what we use to develop lessons for kids. This is what we use to ensure that we're meeting kids where they are, where kids are learning this information. And what's most important in this data collection is that not only are our teachers and staff using this, but our kids are using this information as well. We got to get by them, we have to have kids work and take accountability for their own learning as well. They have conversations with each other. What we found so far in doing this, kids are now, they're challenging each other. Conversation I heard yesterday between kids in certain classrooms, kids been there, kid got eighty-five percent, someone said, hi, I got eighty-seven. That's great conversation, it changes what has happened in the past. And I said, kid, why'd you say that? He think he the smartest, I'm going to be the smartest one in here. When I start hearing those academic conversations just about those numbers right there, it's letting me know that something is happening in the building that we want to replicate. So when we teach kids to take accountability and look at that data and help build that out, it helps us out. It helps them out. P O Cs, these are meetings that we have weekly with staff. All of those meetings are data-driven, all of them. Teachers come to those meetings with student assessments or a student work sample, should I say? We last, two weeks? Two weeks ago, one of our folks was just on the YouTube portion of the gradual release. And in that, teachers were required to bring data, talk to us about what was needed in their classroom. And they can't just tell us, oh, when I told them, oh, I just did this show you. Give me some artifacts, let's discuss our next plans. That's what happened with them, what's going to be differently at this next point. So you hit that you do, I do, we do, they're following on that. Up here, you'll see that our meetings are on Tuesdays with our sixth and seventh grade teachers and Wednesdays at our eighth grade and electors. Dang, I dropped a hint myself. The collaboration portion on there. Again, that's just that third one that talks about disaggregating data and having that discussion. You'll find that soon our walls in academy will talk. And what does that mean? We have data up, we have student work up, we have our war room that will be in there. You'll see kids' information sliding from week to week, maybe month to month. And that's going to be strictly based on how kids perform. Data is the key. This is what we've been working with when we meet on Wednesdays. Dr. Alexander, this is what he's holding us accountable to. This is what we're holding our kids accountable to. This is what staff is going to go with daily. M T S S. Let me just say this for you guys. M T S S is a tier-one initiative. Everybody seem to think that's about special ed or a path to special ed, in fact, it is not. This initiative is making sure that we are doing our very best for kids at the very start. And Gen Ed, we're working with kids, we're putting them out there and saying, hey, And Gen Ed, we're working with kids, we're putting them out there and saying, hey, we are trying to create, and this is my word, I E Ps for every kid. And what that means in my mind is we're teaching kids where they are. If you're visual, if you're auditory, if you're, um, that project based, I wanna make sure that the teachers are doing that for the kids. And this is the final piece, um, I'm gonna give you the B H T.
Okay. So talking about M T S S, if you know anything about that, it's the whole chunk, right? So we're not just hitting academics, we're also working on that behavioral health piece as well. Our B H T team meets every single week. We have a roster of kids that we're focusing on, always bringing new students up to the table, having positive and having positive and areas of growth and achievement that we need to hit on that behavioral piece as well.
Just again, finally with that, um, taking then the lesson learned from this is about use of data. It's about developing strategies that are gonna improve it. I've been hearing them talk about what happens from, uh, B O A to B O to the middle school. It does look differently in those slightly because again, our kids are ordered and learn to take more responsibility with it. So the teachers begin to use data and be able to track that and work with us, I think, when we win. Thank you.
So I just thought one thing, so as far as with your, with your data tracking, um, is everything you saying, I heard you saying test, test and, um, test in the classroom, um, what other data are you tracking with that list?
So, yeah, so the other ones that we are using again, like I said, the classwork. So it's, um, it's the assignments that they've been given, so that's how they're performing on classroom projects, class assignments, homework, how they're performing on quizzes, um, how they are performing on unit tests, the formal tests. Uh, one of the pieces I didn't mention where we are, hopefully we'll get to, assuming that creation, uh, intermediate exams also. So we'll teach teachers how to create internal assessments and being able to use that as another, um, progress monitoring.
All grade level band is using the same, um, kind of formative assessment, the unit test? And then when you come together, then they can say, okay, my, my child, I mean, my student did well on number three. How did you all do? Or my did well, yours did, what did you do? So that's the, that's some of the talking, 'cause everybody taking the same unit test.
Yes, and I would just make sure that I heard you said grade band, right?
The grade.
Okay, thank you, 'cause I, first I heard you say all grade levels.
No, grade, the grade band and those teachers who teach in the same pattern area.
Yes.
So that's also some of the data talk discussion, so you can actually see those unit tests.
What you're talking about specifically is item analysis. We have to do that and make.
I, I have a just observation. To what end? I'm just really frustrated, frustrated. As a district, we like to be able to say, our goal to what end is this? Is it to be that we have students that are reading at, at or above grade level? That they are exceptional in mathematics? That they are well-rounded young people? And that is what our school district is about? I, I, I just forgot, I can't tell what our goal is in these presentations.
So ma- maybe there's a misunderstanding of what the presentations are. These presentations are each building talking about what their focus are. So we have, well, and what their instruct- instructional focus are for the, for their building. So yes, we want to make sure all of our kids are highly proficient in reading math, good characters, all of that. But that's out there. How do you get from there? Well, how do you get from where we are to out there? So now we're taking this in chunks. So this being a, uh, you got new administration, a lot of new teachers, and we've been trying to do the same thing that we've always done, and look what we got, nothing. So now we're looking at this from a different perspective. We're try, we're trying to train teachers to own what happens in their classroom. So in the past, teachers necessarily were not creating assessments to look at data. They had NWA. And basically, you take NWA data that you took in, in September, and you're still planning lessons for it in December. That's an ineffective teaching practice. You're not gonna grow from that. So now, that's why we have our teachers working collaboratively. Uh, we're teaching our teachers how you assess. It's not just the chapter test at the end of book. When they go to grade level meeting, just like Ms. Story said, alright, what was number three? Number three was very complex. Seventy-five percent of my students got it, sixty-five percent of mine got it, ten percent of mine got it. So what did you do differently than we did? So again, we're in a rebuild mode for the district. And in this rebuild, I'll be honest, it started with me. I had to change the way I thought. Because if my expectations are just y'all going there, make sure these kids get good instruction and the test score's gonna go up, that's not gonna do anything. So I had to change my thought process. And my thought process changed to say, hey, district, what are we expecting every kid, every building to do? What systems and supports do we put out? So a lot of it is top down, right? Here's the scope and sequence. Here's the assessment framework. Here's, um, what we look for with P O C. The district manages P O C every week. This is what you should be working over, just, uh, your staff. If any of you all came to, um, District Institute this year, we walked through the door talking about, these are our district expectations. These are balanced literacy, we are a balanced literacy district. Which means that it's not just the teacher talking. The student has to take ownership of their learning. They have to show and demonstrate that they know, uh, what you're trying to give them. Assessment is a huge piece. Data, 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 we keep talking about data. We have our goal is to teach teachers how to create your own data. Because waiting on a standardized system is stale. Just like the state data we get, we take that test in March, we get the data in October. You know, for what it's worth, that data means absolutely nothing. Other than it's a benchmark on piece of paper we have to meet. But kids are in real time. So I think the answer to your question is Brown, it's a whole lot going on. Two, reach our big goal. That big goal is not going to get reached this year, I'll be the first to tip. When you're trying to rebuild, we're changing mindset. We had a lot of teachers who did not believe that every kid deserved a specialized lesson every single day. And the only way that you're gonna know what kids need every day is through data, is through frequent progress monitoring, is through, uh, looking at multiple sources of information. So I really liked where Ms. Story was going because that's been our practice. We have to get our teachers on one accord before we can expect, thank you all. We have to get our teacher, oh, hold on, she has a question. We have to get our teachers prepared to deliver quality instruction before we can expect the kids to grasp it. So that's where we are. So yeah, we want all high proficiency, high morality, but we have to build up to that.
Okay, I'm, I'm interested in knowing, um, have you or any of the three students thought about, um, project-based, um, you know, activities and things of that nature as well as in terms of your P O Cs? Not only are you just looking at the itemization, um, of how students responded, but why did they respond that way? Because it, it clearly across the board, it could have been something in terms of the instruction and self, um, self-impression.
So, um, first of all, thank you for that. Um, what I will say is this, just actually just as part of our conversations, um, about how kids learn, how kids present information to teachers. Share with teachers, hey, you may have a kid that's not necessarily one that can be the best at writing information down. That kid should be allowed to present that information in a project form. So I talked about the, that could construction, that's, that's, that's the handle, that's, that's some picking this up, actually building and making that happen. Some great examples of that, right next door, Mrs. Pruitt, who's our STEM teacher. Every piece that you see in there, I'm not sure if the ones that still up right now, but they had some projects they actually had to build out of pavement. It's about building, uh, trust and angles, and this is a piece that kinda deal with bridges. That shows what is the strongest, um, kinda formations out there to be able to create bridges. We see bridges all throughout, seven right here, one hundred and twenty-seven, for example. They can come on there and actually learn what's gonna be that strong. Kids have to take pick and create certain things and put weights on top of it to see how much it holds. So that project base is indeed that speed of loops, roller coasters. We tied into that, they have a project that's coming up about gym shoes that they're designing, fashion, angles, leather, the type of materials, so absolutely.
So, so even aside from STEM class, this can happen in every content area.
Especially in math and almost, absolutely.
And literacy.
And literacy, absolutely.
Okay, so in terms of, um, no, go ahead, because I have to re, retrain myself.
I have to.
Yeah, I see your moment.
I have the new strategy. Strategies are excellent, especially the strategies that address challenges and areas of growth. It hits everything, which says, I do, you didn't put it up there. Teacher teaches the whole group. Uh, teach, facilitate guided practice. Uh, you do teach your assigned independent practice to be completed, collected, and graded for immediate feedback for the teacher. Then the other part of data is collected, uh, segregated, small groups developed for all learners, four, three, two, one. Four, I can do this work independently and teach a friend. Three, I can do this work independently. Two, I can do this work, but I need help. And then one, I am unable to do this. And it covers all the children because you wanna have those students in. Then it says, teacher tracks student achievement daily and watch for patterns and trends. If you don't track their achievement daily, then when a child gets a low grade, you try, the parent comes in like, how come I wasn't told that my child was failing? Whereas if they keep track of all the students' achievement, they can, you know, send the notes home or not no, no, but, you know, the computer stuff, what you all do now. I'm back in my old days because I am a retired educator and administrator. So what you use and what, uh, Mrs. Brown use, this is the pattern that we use. That's how our student work achieved. And the teachers knew their job. They didn't have any lack time to sit back and drink coffee and gossip in the lounge because except for at lunchtime. They knew that they had to have their paperwork together because they never knew if one of you were gonna come into the classroom, okay, pull up your, um, your achievement sheet. I wanna see what your kids did yesterday or two days ago. Hey, they got it, they're supposed to have it. So whenever we look at scores next year, I mean, at the end of the school year, our scores are not gonna be determined by what, uh, what Dr. Alexander said just on that one test. You can see everything that the child has done in the classroom or in the classes because this is departmentalized from each teacher. And you will have success, you definitely will have success.
Okay, just one, okay, my small comment, I'm sure you probably thought about it already, but, uh, in terms of, um, students learning or students engagement with each other is a big part of the learning process. The teacher is facilitator and, you know.
Dr. Alexander, you had a presentation to show us about cell phone.
Yeah, we, we can roll into that. So, uh, this year, uh, we implemented a process here at the middle school to really minimize, um, minimize the utilization of cell phones. We know that those cell phones cause a lot of problems, uh, in the middle school. Um, so I have Mr. Ivy and, uh, Miss Kostas there, uh, to, uh, you kinda give a demonstration of what the process looks like. So I'll talk through it as they do it. Uh, when school students walk into the building, they receive the yonder pouch. Chris, can you, can you? Give it to Chris, he needs his home.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you?
So essentially, when students walk into the building, they're given a phone pouch. And they put their phone in the pouch, uh, which is inclusive of any wireless device, uh, Apple Watch, 'cause we figured out that they still were getting around it. Uh, but they put their phone to the pouch and then there is the, the little clip that closes the pouch. So once they put the phone in the pouch, the clip, the pouch is locked.
Ms., um, Mr. Ivy, could you show demonstrations to the parents that's in the audience? So as Dr. Alexander is talking, you can have a follow it, thank you.
So once the student puts their phone in the pouch, uh, it's a, uh, very highly secured pouch. It closes at the top with a magnet. Once the pouch is closed, the student cannot open it. Uh, the student puts the pouch in their book bag, um, all day long, the pouch is there. And then at this mistle, as the students are leaving out the building, uh, they're met with one of our staff members with this device. Uh, they tap the pouch on the device and their phones open up. Uh, we've been implementing this maybe two, two and a half weeks, and we see a drastic difference, uh, across the school. Um, we did have an incident, I would tell you, these kids are something else. Uh, within two hours of us starting this process, uh, we had about forty kids to figure out how to undo the process. But the reality is, you have to really, uh, break this process to, so show, Mr. Ivy, take the phone out. Um, so here's the problem. When the kid decides they want to break into the pouch, what they end up doing is really breaking their phone. But the other part, it also will hit you. So when you, you have to, I mean, what Mr. Ivy did, you have to do that like literally for a long time with a lot of force. Uh, and unfortunately, a few kids figured it out. But, uh, we've been able to work with the company to get some even higher security pouches. Um, and so I personally think, and I thank the board for this vote because this has drastically changed. Our discipline rates are down, uh, the kids are not on TikTok all day, so they can't follow all these fights, they can't record stuff. Um, and it really makes a difference. I will tell you that the kids are stressed out. We've had kids literally making life decisions. Do I do the right thing or do I just risk it all and not give up my phone? And I watched the little kid, and he went, he went back and forth, and he said, you know what? I'm gonna give up my phone. And because he gave up his phone, he got bugged with his principal that day. But the key is, uh, they are getting to the point now where it's, you know what, I just gotta do it, I have to focus. Uh, and then I'll get it back at the end of the day. So, Mr. Ivy, I want to add some to the.
I just wanted to know, as Dr. Alexander was saying, that, that process of me hitting it on the ground and concrete that does, those first banks that we received from, like, after the pouch was somewhat effective. We did call in, with this, it was brand new, and I would tell you that that banging the pouch on the new ones that we had coming in here, it's not quite as easy for them to get out. They get their pouches out. I will also tell you that, if you see me banging this thing on here, one of the things, and it was definitely getting, it was destroying your phone. And you get there and get to banging this thing on the concrete. That's what you have to do, you literally have to hit it. Uh, when I first was testing it out, this little button here came back and hit my wrist a couple of times, and it discouraged me from banging it on there. But, um, kids are gone and they've done that too, they, they found it out. And Dr. Alexander is right, that very first week, at the end of the day, you saw kids, oh my God, I miss you at the end of the day. Now, yeah, and now, when they, they do come in, student, uh, Dr. Alexander mentioned, he came to the security, he was like, I'm not, I'm not. You saw him having this internal conflict with himself. He did turn it in, he came in, they don't have kids, they rarely ever think about it right now. Uh, someone's like, hey, I just need some music, I gotta do this, hey, talk to you. So it has helped, it is working. Uh, I do appreciate the support behind us. It is a process and one that is, when it remains consistent, with kids, they have consequences when they violate those things, it works. It works, it works, and this is not a movement that's just here in one thirty-two that's happening across the country. And I am happy to say that this is one of those things that we are heading curve of in this area.
I got the question, so how many complaints from the parents have you got?
Um.
From parents?
From parents.
No, yeah.
Kids.
What about this, that was your phone, so I know you, you mentioned.
Um, sorry, I had one, oh. Okay. I had, I had one, the phone call was made and it said, hey, yeah, the staff damaged my, um, my phone. And I just told dad, 'cause, um, mom, while she did it, she made the complaint, she said dad up there. And I said, okay, dad, well, here you go. I gave you a magnet, I simply gave you the phone. I said, can you unlock it? He kinda looked at it, said, well, here's the process, take it, place it on there, put it on there, push the button. He's like. He's like, thank you very much, Dr. Holmes, I'm my kid. Because every time the kid laid up, it's not damage staff, it's not damaging phones. They take it on there, push that button, it's just that simple.
And in addition to that, we purposely do not take the students' phone. They, as soon as they get their pouch, put the phone in your bag, you, they have lockers at the middle school, lock it up all day. We purposely do not take the phone so that the district is not liable for that purpose.
I have a question. You stated that we were getting, uh, better pouches. We got them over? Okay, is that the second order because those pouches cost around $10,000 with a $400 delivery charge? I saw that part. So my question is this...
We didn't pay for it, we developed it. They provided us with new pouches.
Okay, did we pay for the new pouches?
No.
Oh, we did, so how many did we get?
Uh, we got all, they got everything from the place, yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm sort of randomly, but I, I do have a question. So I'm relieved that the parents are not complaining then?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I thought we sure were going to complain, so I tried to hold back a little bit when it was... Uh, glad that this is a little forward in the discussion.
How you know, Ms. Bates?
I, well, thank you. You know what?
That's good to know you read.
Come on, Ms. Bates.
I'll say read. I know, that's right. Stay read, that's right.
Since Ms. Bates wanted to take us, all right. Uh, so tonight, I will be giving the board a final, um, financial update on the Calumet Middle School Gym Project. Uh, as you can see, this buil-, this building is absolutely beautiful. Uh, it's amazingly functional. Uh, I love to come into the building and see the students in the gym. Uh, I love to come in and see the students in the STEM lab. Uh, it just really makes me grateful, uh, for what we can do when we put our minds to it uh, in the name of our kids. So, uh, just as a brief overview, uh, we originally budgeted $11.45 billion for this project. Uh, for the most part, it was funded through federal grants, through our asset, which was our COVID money, uh, evidence-based funding, which came from the state. And then we had some money that we matched from our local fund dollars. And what that means is that over time, the district, um, the district basically increases their savings account. And so it's important that we utilize the money that we save on our school, on our district, on our community, rather than just letting it sit there. So, um, this is pretty much the budget, so to speak, $11.5. We've received all of these revenues back, uh, so that, well, the, the grant, we've received all of those back. Here is the total project cost. So, um, the estimated cost of the project, and that's based on when we work with our architects and our engineers, this is what they tell us based on the market. Based on the market, this is what you should expect to pay. So the contracted cost is when we actually go out to bid it. These are what the comps come in at. And because this is a construction project, we are required by the state, uh, procurement laws to take the least and most responsive bidder. So our contract costs, our actual costs that we, uh, obtained through the bid and our contractor was Henry Brothers. So as you can see, uh, we estimated, uh, $11.5 million. Our contract cost came in, um, just under that. Uh, I shared with the board that we were able to, uh, save a little on our budget. And what that means is part of the plan is a contingency fund. And your contingency fund is, uh, a percentage of money that's set to the sign for just that contingencies. When you build anything, especially things of, uh, schools and buildings of this magnitude, something will go wrong. Um, these, the engineers and architects, they draft these buildings on computers. By the time they actually get there, some things don't really work out, some things are not as functional. So your contingency fund, uh, is that pot of money that you are able to dip into to make those additional costs. I'll give you a perfect example, two of them actually. One, uh, this project was supposed to start, we were supposed to get to groundbreaking in early September. Uh, the board approved it in August, we were literally supposed to start breaking ground the very next week. We incurred, um, a major delay with the Metropolitan Water District. So that's the Cook County Water People. Uh, they had new people, new rules, new policies, so we had to go through a lot of hoops. We didn't actually start clearing lane until November. So if you think about, that's two months into the product, the project, um, that we kind of lost some time. The goal in construction is always to have the walls and the roof up before the winter comes. We're here in Chicago, we know that winters could be brutal. Uh, so that was the goal, to have the roof up, to have the walls up, uh, by the time December, the winter came. Because we were delayed, they had to work ten times faster to make that work. Thankfully, we had a very light winter. I think we might have had maybe a week of snow, uh, this entire winter that was detrimental. But it did hold us back. So, uh, one of the things we had to do was pay for, uh, additional heating and propane. So, uh, where are we? The hallway that connects the, uh, old building to the new building, that's cinder block walls. You can't lay masonry, masonry walls, uh, if it's really cold. So in order for them to keep the progress going, they had to put up a big tent and put a propane tank in there to keep it warm enough, uh, so that they could continue to go. So that's an example of an additional cost. Another additional cost is, uh, one of the biggest things that MWRD, the Metropolitan Water Department, gave us issue with is this building covered a green space. Uh, green space is good in a community because it allows the water to drain. Calumet Park is a flood zone. So we know that water, uh, management is huge. So we had to take extraneous, um, measures to make sure we dealt with water. We don't want to become burdens for our neighbors and our community, so we had to make sure that we dealt with the water. So around the entire perimeter where you see grass, there are water vaults, storm vaults, where it collects tons and tons of water. And then at the top of the vault, it's a little small hole. And once the water gets to that level, it starts to let it out very slowly into the sewer, into the municipal drain system. And it was designed to do that so that this area would not overwhelm the community. Well, one of the challenges that we faced is that while they were digging, you have to go down so low to hit the water table. The water table looked like a wave pool. You could, Mr. Corley is laughing, but you could actually stand on the ground and do the wave. So we had to get with the engineers and the architects and they had to basically make that ground solid before you could build on it. We don't want the ground to sink, the building to sink, uh, in two years. So we had to do some extra things to make sure we got there. However, uh, myself and Mr. Corley, we were very, um, heavy-handed on our contracts to make sure we stayed within budget, even to come in below. So we did just that, uh, we came in, uh, below our budget, um, about $8,300. So that may not sound like a lot, but to me, that's a major accomplishment. Uh, I've done a lot of construction in my career. You always go over and not under. So I'm really appreciative of the support of Mr. Corley, uh, our architects, D L A, our contractors, uh, Henry Brothers and our engineers, Robinson. So here's just pretty much the final cost analysis. So we reserved $11.5 million for the project. We actually spent $11,482,2383. And then we came in under budget by $17,000 total. So, um, that's, thank you. And I think, but, but that goes to everybody, right? This project wasn't easy. This project took a lot of planning, preparation, um, and it, it took a lot of strategy. Uh, we could have built this building brick by brick. That probably would cost us 40% more. Instead, this building is brick, built out of people, prefabricated walls. If you were here, you would watch the walls come down laughing. It was a sight to see, walls were coming in on the truck. And every hour and a half, another truck was coming because that's how long it took them to stand up on the wall. So on Thursday morning, when they started, you have one corner. By Monday afternoon, this entire building was up. So that was a decision that we made in the very beginning because we were looking at costs. We did not sell the bond, we didn't raise property taxes, we didn't do any of that for this project. This project was done through grant money, uh, and local reserves. So we had to make sure we stayed within the confines of, of what we had. And I think we did pretty good. So any questions from the board?
No question that I... No question that I couldn't do. I love coming under budget. Very seldom does anything when you build in Cal Park. I mean, Cal Park itself, we always go over budget, no matter what it is. And then at the end of it, we end up having a mess. But I must say, I am so proud and thankful because I fussed about it and I talked about it. And you all were probably determined to say, love, if I'm gonna have a doggone thing to say about anything that's going wrong. So it worked for me, but, uh, this building is fantastic. And I think everything, I looked at everything, I even counted the seats with Mr. Corley. As I was curious, that's the height, 500 people, then I saw it. And then the way he had the seats set up with the rails in between, I could see security there, that we won't have too many problems, you know, because people come, hey, you have to look at this stuff. You just can't go and build something and not worry about security and stuff because when you come in, you got to find a way to get out. That's one of my, uh, things that I have. I always, when I, like I said, whenever I go anyplace, when I get to that place, I look for the exit door. Because like I said, you never know what's gonna happen. But, hey, you did your job. You did. You did what we, what, uh, you said you were gonna do. And you did some other stuff too that made the building even better. So thank you.
Okay, consenting items. Suggested motion hereby move that the Board of Education approve. Consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E as presented.
I'd like to pull B, C, and D, I have questions on those.
You said B, C, and D? Oh, B, C, and E, okay. Um, so, hereby move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda items A and D. May I have a motion?
I have a question. Can we, um, oh.
May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Golar in second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Love, question?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to talk about this A2, the personnel period.
You want to pull that out?
Yes, please.
Um...
You want to post it?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yeah. I'd like to amend the motion. So the consent agenda items is A1 and D. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Golar in second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown, right?
Ms. Love?
No, that was, uh, Brown. We'll call John.
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Items A1 and D carried.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna take A2, so we'll talk about that. So, but, Ms. Love, you said you have some questions? B, C, and E. So with, um, B1. Appropriate payroll.
She wants to... Well, I have a question. With, um, the summer, I mean, with the after-school activities, you have, um, the, you have $1,900. So for 8:30, you have $1,900. Where is that going? I understand we have the summer school, but after that, um, the payroll for 8:30 is $1,900. So what payroll is that, this is turned, I meant the payroll section? So it said after-school activities, so the payroll, 8:30 to 4:00 is $1,980, um, 77. And then you have interruption to go over 8:16. So I just want to know what after-school activities we had? Is that...
Do you want to add something now or...
I mean, do you know, I mean, do you know?
I, no, I don't know off the top of my head.
Do you know? Okay.
Payroll account.
Okay, yeah, because I'm just curious, what's... I just want to know what is that because, um, in the payroll period, A2, I understand because that was carryover with the, um, summer school stuff.
You said that was the 8:30 payroll?
It's a, yeah, the 8:30 payroll, we have after-school activities. So I was just curious, what are...
So, that's probably sports. We have, uh, girls track, girls and boys track on field. Uh, they start right at school start.
At the school start? I thought, well, then we paying our coaches or what? They don't get a stipend or they are out.
They're out, all of our, nobody gets stipends. Everybody in the district is out, they're in the extra curriculum. That's what the county, that's what was negotiated in the contract.
So they're out.
Everybody is out, yes.
All right, I just want to make sure. So everybody's out, okay, that's your opinion.
So we voting for after-school and we don't know what we have? Because the other didn't, we just said track. So, uh, we had a showing, uh, the action?
So we have a full presentation, that's...
Right, this is just the payroll. I was just curious, uh, what, why we still have it, you know, what's the after-school? So I understand that, and did they start ahead until the school start, they went?
School start on August 14th.
August 14th, so did they previous, because they're still here and for the payroll of 8:16. So they went us past that, so who's getting paid? So I think you all just look at, because I want to know who's getting paid for that after-school activity for the payroll of 8:16. I could understand at 8:30, if that's the after-school to sports. Yeah, I just, uh, that was, that's the question for me, who's getting paid? So please give that, thank you.
Okay, I, after the presentation, I already found out something, uh, found out some of my answers with the presentation of, uh, the building and stuff. But the MTS as boot camp register, who's, who goes to that?
That was the principals and, uh, I believe Ms. Bates.
Okay. No staff, did that basically...
No, that was all the administrators, yes.
Okay, so we had the, the B2? Or that was it, just the B1?
Okay, I found my favorite. B2, let's see.
That's how I'm feeling.
That was B2, that part of it.
Okay. And you have a question, it's seen?
Oh, yeah. My question on that part was, uh, you want to go to support him at what a conference superintendent is going to? But, uh, that weekend is also the conference that we're at triple I, the triple I. So my question is, you gonna leave that conference live to Atlanta? And you want the board to pay for it? And I didn't receive any invitation to support him. I didn't see anything in the, I read all my Fridays, I'm trying to find out. So I don't know. When did this come about?
Uh, I notified the board back, I think, February.
Oh, February.
Yes, uh, I, so the board president, uh, she said at a, uh, I don't know if it was committee meeting or board... Uh, I, so the board president, uh, she said at a, I don't know if it's committee meeting or board member meeting, that she wanted, that she thought it would be a good idea to support. So there was no invitation, she just said that she thought it would be a good idea to support. So that's why she's on the board. I didn't ask any board member or the board to come, one, because I did know it was triple I. But she did say that she thought it would be a nice gesture to support the superintendent. So that's why uh, she's on the agenda today.
And, and when he brought it up to us, I know that you sent the congratulations. We all said that was good. And so, he mentioned it would be nice to have his board there. And so unfortunately, the triple I was coinciding with that. And so, because we don't have to pay for triple I, because I won the scholarship. From the Illinois uh, School Board Association. So really, it's not coming out of the district's pocket, so to speak.
But the money to go to support him.
But that's.
Coming out of the board.
Right, that's not, it's not much, it's only one day.
It doesn't matter what it is, it's a dime, it's money.
Yeah, it's money, but it's, but it's still not. Okay. Thank you. Is that, you have a question about E two?
E two?
I mean, E one?
Uh, yeah, um, yes. Last month, I think it was last month, I asked about um. How much were the student fees? How much money we received from the student fees? And I received. We received on the uh, your Friday report, how much money we got. So I'm, after reading it, I had to really ask, was that the student fee, fees from registration?
Yes, that's the.
Okay. From registration, okay. I have a problem with that. Because. We had about nine hundred students? Well, I don't, I checked that back, because that might have been the year eighty-three? Eighty-two that you gave me the amount for, or was it eighty-two, eighty-three?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Okay. I didn't go there, let me see. The problem is this. Okay, you said that student fee was ten thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars. Okay, for that year. But we had about nine hundred students. And if they were still paying the fifty-two dollars, the fifty-two dollars per student, then our amount should have been around forty-seven thousand two hundred sixteen dollars. Well, you said, uh, whenever I made that statement before. Uh, stated that some kids get waived. Well, if you got waived, then that mean thirty-seven thousand sixty-two dollars waived. Uh, those figures are not making sense whatsoever. And something is wrong. And then this year, you charging another fifty-two dollars per student. And we have about nine hundred seventeen students this year. And so, I didn't do that math, but I'm hoping forty-seven thousand.
It's, it's the exact same thing what you're saying. So we have a, our district is considered a high socioeconomic, uh, let me rephrase it. A high low-income district. Meaning we have a lot of low-income students in our district. So because of that, when the students register, they complete the uh, income verification. Depending on the income of the parent, then that's what dictates if you pay registration fees or if you get a fee waiver. We have a lot of students who fall under those low-income parameters, who get a fee waiver. So that's why that number looks like that. So if you think about it, it's probably about a quarter of our students actually pay the waiver. While the others, they were, uh, they get the fee waiver. Uh, it's, it's kinda tied to your free and reduced lunch. Uh, because our numbers are so high, our entire district is considered CEP, which is the state's program to provide free lunch to everybody. But you still have to go through verification. And when your verification income is higher than the threshold, then you still have to pay for registration.
Okay, but. Whenever I did my calculation, calculation. And we had nine hundred eight students. And it only, with that ten thousand dollars, it's saying, it comes out that only a hundred and ninety-five students paid. And seven hundred thirteen students were waived.
So that's what you said, about twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five, that's more than twenty-five that paid.
So if we had, if we have, let's say two hundred kids that paid. If we have nine hundred kids on our enrollment, that's about twenty-five percent, maybe a few dollars less.
But what are the students getting for this, because?
Ms. Love, I'm, excuse me.
I, I. I'm sorry, no, I was just gonna say, I asked in September for a presentation on student activity fund.
You wanna talk up?
I asked, I asked in September to have a presentation with CSBO about student activity fund. I'm hoping you can have this, and I was told it was gonna have to, this may have more on some of these questions. So perhaps we can have a, a presentation on where we are, how it's been spent, um, how it's collected, so that some of this is, and I'm not dismissing Ms. Love's questions, but I've asked for this last one.
And remember, registration fees are not student activity funds. That's general operation, big difference. So that, that's the difference. Registration goes to the general operating budget of the district. Student activity funds, uh, our student activity funds are streaming.
Oh, excuse me. I do know what funds are. I'm not new to this. As I told you, I'm a retired educator and administrator. I've been through this all day. I know what these fees are. And my thing is this. If only a hundred and some odd kids paid, what do we give those kids? What do we give the students, the parents for that fifty-two dollars per child? That, that's my question, that's my whole thing. Because maybe in the future, we need to waive these uh, student fees. Because times are hard and parents are hard. When they have three and four children, it's hard to give up off of two hundred dollars just to register students and don't get anything for it. That's, but that's the point that I'm making.
He'll get back to you, Ms. Love.
Who will be back to you?
Superintendent.
So, Ms. Love, your question, you asked for a presentation, uh, so.
For activities.
For activity fund, and. Well, and then I just made the point to recognize that this is two totally separate things.
Of course they are.
So.
I know what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
So we just, our front is just a, a presentation on student activity. It's showing here in the fund balance, this is our student activity beginning balance is zero, revenue zero, expense zero. And you said it's a low balance, but we're, it's not reflected on this report.
There's a reason for that. This.
Okay.
The reason is that this is the treasurer's report. The treasurer does not manage your student activity. Your student activity fund is managed locally.
Okay, so can you give us an, an account of the student activity fund? Um, this is, so we need that, so we could see exactly what's in our student activity fund. I understand the local, in the treasury, but we need to know that.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So can I have a motion for? B, C, and E?
We vote for C separately? Are we voting for these separately?
No, we're voting together because it's all the same.
That's what she wanted to vote it separately?
No, she did not say that. We're voting all together. So can I have a motion?
Vote on this separately or?
No, together.
Together.
Well, with the board?
It's together.
Because, yeah, okay.
Okay. May I have um, B, C, and E?
Because she had a question about C.
She had a question about all of them, they were together.
Well, I think we should vote for C separately. I mean, with the board.
Is that the board one?
Yes.
So, letter B and letter E. May I have a motion?
So let's do the letters B and.
Motion by Ms. Brown and second by Mr. Golar. May I roll call?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Items B and E carried.
And may I have a letter C? May I have a motion for that? Motion by Mr. Golar, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dixon? Roll call John?
Brown? Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Love.
Story? Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Letter, I'm sorry, the number six, action items. Approval of adoption of policies, press plus, issue one fifteen. Suggested motion hereby move that the Board of Education approved the revisions to board policies that were first read at the board meeting on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, as presented. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Story, second? Second by Mr. Golar. Roll call John?
Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, seven, seven two. Thornton Township Treasurer's Office. Suggested motion via hereby move that the Board of Education appoint the Superintendent Dr. Alexander to serve on the behalf, on behalf of County Met Township. Issue one thirty-two, as treasury. On the County Met Township trustees, I'm sorry, as trustee on the County Met Township trustees of school board as presented. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Kimbrough? Second by Mr. Golar.
I have a question.
Question, Mr. Dixon?
So have you appointed the person that is going to be the trustee?
Well, the superintendent suggested that, that he be the person. Right, yeah, right. Who have a question?
Question about the addition to the uh, the, whereas, whereas number two? To amend that, so that it says the reads, whatever that, I'm trying to figure out. So it's two one, um, the resolution, be amended?
What are you, what page?
So that, there's a resolution appointing trustees of schools, section one. Different ones to amend that, so there's a determination for resignation of? The appointee service.
What is your question?
I'm wondering if you amend that.
Amended.
To, to have said the termination and, and for resignation of the board, to terminate, um, the appointee service. So right now, it's a determination of appointee service on this board, or appointment on this board.
You wanna change the language?
I don't, so Ms. Brown, I don't think the. Because it's appointment, termination means for whatever reason. It's not specifically saying the person died, got fired, resigned. It's just saying, you no longer are on this board, that's what it's saying. This is Chris Grobings, he can speak to me.
So this is page one sixty.
E has it.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, what's the question?
So I, if there's a resignation? This appointment shall continue in effect until the first following to, to occur. The termination, and I read that as being fired, as opposed to the resignation. I'm wondering if, what termination is that, or that explains the resignation? Given it's on the current board faculty? So I'm trying to make sure that we are saying that if he is the longer employee of this district, his, his, his seat on the trustee is the board trustee's, regardless of what the circumstances is?
Yeah, so there's, there's a double meaning there. So the termination of appointee service on this board, that would be if it was a board member appointed. And the other one is if it's an employee. And if he does resign as an employee, then his service on that board is automatically terminated. And then you have appoint number one.
So make sure you're clear about that.
Yep.
I read it as termination, they get fired, if he resigns, he can hold his spot.
Yeah, it's just talking about two different people, two different classifications.
May I have a question? I mean, due to the fact, what's on the board document, doc, yeah, document that we have in front of us that we appoint for CSBO? To sit on this because, uh, Dr. Albert Simon says.
And the only thing I would say is that I think this role is immaterial of the person uh, and more indicative of the role of the superintendent. So whoever the superintendent should be. Whoever the superintendent is, they should serve as the trustee. Uh, as I shared with the board at our committee meeting, um, sitting on the trustee treasurer schools, you'll, the role is not to go over day-to-day finance operations, uh, or even just looking at the finances of your district. The role is to make decisions, uh, that impact other school districts. And so, that's a role that I think, uh, is indicative of something the superintendent should do. One, because of their relationship with the Board of Education, their knowledge of operations outside of just the business department. But two, there has to be collaboration with other school districts and other boards of education uh, as it relates to how money is being spent. A perfect example, with the treasurer's office, there are districts that are leaving. So at this point, the new trustees will have to talk about how districts are going to be assessed. And when districts are assessed, because people left, everybody's bill is gonna go up. And so those type of conversations have to be had. And concessions have to be made, especially, when we're talking about, um. My, what I do in District one thirty-two impacts District one thirty-three. Uh, so there has to be some level of familiar relationship. Uh, the super, the CSBOs necessarily don't have that relationship with the other districts. Uh, but it's the same concept as the special education co-op. The special ed director is not the board member, it's the superintendent. Because you have to have somebody who can speak totally on behalf of the district. So that was my recommendation. However, the board does have a right to appoint a board member or any other district employee.
So I just said, so basically, this is just strictly about not just financing. This has something to do with how to run the district.
So part of the, the treasurer's office, they're gonna do the day-to-day work. They meet with the CSBOs monthly, they work with them. This, the, the trustees and, I don't see, uh, the County Met Township trustees, who Mr. Relay possibly could have gave some insight. But the trustees work mostly as it relates to policy, to legislation. Uh, they are the board that approves investments. So when you start talking about investments, every district's money is in there together. Some things are more beneficial for some districts versus the others. So it's not specifically talking about the day-to-day granular piece of finance, but it's the policy and legislative piece of finance that impacts us all. So the board definitely has a, a right to do whichever way. But my recommendation, uh, in pretty much every other town, every other school district has moved to select the superintendent.
I talked to someone, but just I get what you said the day to day, but we have a CSBO. And um, he got the position, more capable of going on that board, so that's my appointment. So how do we vote on this?
We first wanna talk about it, let everybody have a chance to make a comment. Ms. Brown, did you, or Ms. Love, I'm, I'm not sure. Go ahead. Please don't fire the mic on this panel.
Uh, no, sorry. So to that point, do, and this is in effect until it is not in effect? That was the other question I, I didn't like to be answered to, um. It's two years, is that what it is?
The, the legislation say your seat is for ten years. Um, so what I would tell you is that the plan for Thornton Township, uh, is to organize October seventh, April first. Fourteen to. Uh, but by June, by July first, there will be a facelift on what the office looks like. Uh, so that means selecting a new treasurer, because Mark is retiring. Uh, there will be new, there will be members, districts leaving. So, uh, right now, these next eight, nine months is very critical. Uh, because now you're trying to create what the office looks like. Uh, so there will be transition, um, after July one. Meaning what the operations look like, who's the treasurer, uh, and the dishes, whatever part of that. And your question, I, I got an answer for you. Um, how long do we have to stay? That will be part of that conversation with transition as well.
Okay. I have a concern, because uh, April first is election day for new board members. We're not guaranteed that we're gonna get the same three board members back. And so we, the four of us, or the three of us, might be left up here. And we get three brand-new board members. So the ones, the three. So the ones, the three of us, we need to know exactly what we're doing. We need to know where our nice monies are. We need to know the person who's going to handle the money. Because like I said, in April, we're gonna, we might lose three people. June, we might, we will be losing another person. And so in this transition, we as three board members can't sit up here and twiddle our thumbs and don't know what we're doing.
Chris, well, you mean four?
Yes.
You mean four?
Four what?
Four board members, but we're not talking about that. Is, the bottom line is, it's just what the attorney said. It can determine on the persons that's left, uh, here. It can always be determined.
Thing is, you don't appoint somebody who's not gonna be here and then have to select somebody, someone else for that position, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, again, we understand it, but we don't want to go too much in depth with the election. Cause this, this is not the time right now.
But you have to think about it.
Yeah, but.
You just can't sit up here and say, we're not gonna think about it, you may not be on board.
Move on to a vote. Okay. So we're voting, we're voting on whether or not the superintendent is going to be in this, in this position.
And can I, can I just say this? And I'm, I'm saying this in objectivity. What I'm recommending is the role of the superintendent. Not Marcus, the role of the superintendent. Uh, there are, are, and I'm sure Chris could speak to it. The CSBO highly qualified financial guy. However, when we're having conversations, uh, about policy, about legislation, and how District one thirty-two's actions impact other districts, I feel, my personal belief, is that the board would want to have their superintendent, the person who they hired, to be the face and spokesperson of the district in that seat. Dr. Gasbrough, uh, extremely talented guy, however, there's a lot that Dr. Gasbrough does not see about this district, because it does not go to the CSBO seat, even if it deals with money. Uh, I'm, I'm working with legislation as we speak that necessarily does not go to the CSBO's office. It's based on policy and legislation that comes through the superintendent. So that's my only thing. I'm not saying it specifically for me, I'm saying it for whoever sits in the role of the superintendent.
So let's move on to the vote. Um, so you heard the questions, let's move on.
I can answer the same, Madam President. I think that's a discussion we should have amongst us. Because again, Dr. Alexander is leading.
Well, let's, again, sweep, I mean, look at the same sweep. Ms. Dixon?
I just.
Can we, can we move on and take a vote?
Well, I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking.
So I did hear the motion.
I did.
And the motion was, John, who voted?
Kimbrel, motion, Golar second.
So let's go on for a vote, we've already done it, so.
So we're on.
So please roll it to me.
Read what we're voting on.
We're voting on it right now, there's a motion already.
Read what we're voting on, sorry, through the conversation.
Yes, it wasn't said.
Madam Chair?
Brown?
It was a motion.
Second question, suggestion.
Kimbrel?
And who seconded?
Golar.
So now, we asked a question, we discussed, and let's move on to the vote.
We're voting on the superintendent.
We're voting, let me read, let me read.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, please read because.
I, I've already read before, but for you, Ms. Love, I'll do it. Here nearby move that the Board of Education appoints the Superintendent Dr. Alexander to serve on behalf of Calumet Public School, District one thirty-two as trustee on the Calumet Township trustee of the school board as presented. Go ahead.
Brown? No. Dixon?
Dixon.
Dixon, um, I'm okay.
You weren't?
I'm, I, I don't have a vote, I'm, I'm not gonna vote.
Just say upstate.
Upstate, okay.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrel?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion failed. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, motion failed, that's correct.
What, what did you have?
I had three, three, uh, three yes, three no, and one of same.
So what's the next plan of, the next step in this process? You'll have to have a special meeting prior to, um, October seventh to appoint someone, or else the regional office.
It's gonna be quite before the.
Yes, absolutely.
So we're gonna have that before the, so we, we'll, we'll talk about the date, so. Um.
So do you like my opinion on that?
You know what, go ahead, Chris, you determine, we put you.
If you'd like to take another vote, and for example, make a vote to appoint Dr. Gasbrough, you can do that right now, you don't have to wait for a question.
Thank you very much, so do you guys want to do that now?
No.
Yeah, can we, cause listen, it needs to be.
Cause it's hard to get a date for us.
Exactly, it is.
So my, my.
Cause this is type of time for people's time. So, um, so I read the same and just, uh.
Ms. Brown, I have a question.
I, I wanted to suggest for past, this is what I've been suggesting before we wrote it, is that we have to do a special meeting to talk about personnel issues.
Do you want to?
Let's go to the next session.
Okay, that's fine, thank you, thank you. Okay, so move on to. Seven, three, approval of school, school year twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five after-school program plan. Suggested motion via hereby move that the Board of Education approve school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five after-school programming planned at a total of, total cost of sixty-nine thousand thirty dollars and zero cents as presented. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Golar? May I have a set?
We have a presentation for, Ms. Bates?
Ms. Bates? Yeah, we should have.
Wait, can't, because that was under superintendent.
How you doing, Ms. Bates, again?
I am well.
No, no.
I promise to keep this brief. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on our after-school programming. Our after-school tutorial and enrichment will include both, um, DLA, reading and math. And instructional focus, uh, is informational test reading strategies, math problem solving, STEM, um, which includes hands-on learning through agriculture, of course, through our greenhouse technology and engineering. There will be pre-assessments, uh, mid-year and post, and all will be administered to all students participating in the program. The instructional enrichment format, as you can see, we have three days of core instruction that will include reading and math, and then there'll be one day of enrichment. Uh, and, and within that enrichment time, we'll plan to have, um, some pretty fun activities for our students that Burrow and Burrow Academy. Calumet will be a little different. Um, Calumet students will have Tuesdays and Thursdays of core instruction, which will include reading and math. And then Wednesday, excuse me, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays of organized sports. The selection criteria is based on the assessment, um, and which is the NWA that we're using, that, um, that we were already in the process of selecting students. Uh, students from grade's first grade and are identified for additional support, uh, students approaching grade level expectations that are aligned to IER and NWA. Teacher recommendations are also very significant because a teacher is the one who also sees that child every day and also has, uh, done some practice monitoring via, uh, additional assessment and teacher observations. The after-school schedule, uh, anticipated start date, September thirtieth, and end date, March sixth, which is right before IER testing. Classes will meet Monday through Thursday at the time, two thirty to four P M. Meal will be provided before the start of each class. Um, before the start of the classes, excuse me, and transportation will be provided for those who qualify. So here's a listing of our activities for our students at Burrow Academy, um, Burrow Elementary and Calumet Middle School. Um, and we've already, uh, for, for Calumet, as, um, it was mentioned earlier, their sports has already started, so that's just in addition to the art, music and engineering piece. The breakdown of the cost, um, as you can tell, the total amount is sixty-nine thousand thirty dollars, and, uh, the number of paraprofessionals that you want in each building, and of course, the number of teachers, and that, and materials and supplies as needed, estimated cost of three thousand dollars.
Sorry.
Yes, I should, go ahead, Kimbrel.
So how, how, why those particular offerings, how did you come to those?
Affordability, what was best that we can do, um, and, and those were some recommendations that came directly from the, uh, school administration.
And, and you talked about meals, so you know, we asked you, you have a mystery vendor that provides?
No.
I don't see the budget, I don't see the budget for the meals.
So, so our, our meals are, are provided by our same services that we have here today. And yes, and, and it's just, we make sure that our kids have something healthy before we transition into class.
So our, our meal service is on regular, uh, school nutrition program. So they, they get a full meal for supper. Uh, today they had chicken sandwiches, mashed potatoes and vegetables and apple. So they get a full meal every single day, and it's claimed on our, uh, monthly food claim.
So that's what I was gonna ask, um, so we're gonna use our same.
Yes, the same.
Yes.
Okay.
The only time we get something different is during spring break, and that's because our, uh, we don't get reimbursable meals during spring break, so you have to purchase meals outside.
And, and we have a lot of, for enough time for children to be able to eat, and, and teachers come and pick them up.
And then report out, how, how do we know that this is impactful?
So we have assessment that starts right at the very beginning, and then we'll have a court, we have another assessment plan at mid-year, which will be December. And then we pick up our students, and we pick up another group for some of the same students we pick up again in January.
I want to ask, how do you know about the, the size of the, the class that each, uh, teacher's gonna have?
We, we work carefully with the, um, the, the school administrators to kind of slim down based on our urgent needs, what other students that we want to try to address. Uh, ten students per class at the lower grades, and so that'll be just two per class, two per grade level. And we're not having any services provided for our kindergarten students, but definitely for our first grade students on up. And that's because it's, makes for a long day, and it was recommended that we look at, uh, homing in on our first grade on up.
And I'm looking at the parents, so you only have three.
Mm-hmm.
And as for what, one in each building?
Yes.
And how many students in each class?
Ten.
So the, the, I'm, the role of the paraprofessionals is support.
Right.
One of the things that we did differently, uh, with after-school is that we're trying to really push uh, high-intensity tutoring and interventions. So all of your teachers who will be teaching are teachers. Uh, your parents are really just there for administrative support.
Mm-hmm.
All kids with very small classroom sizes, targeted instruction. Uh, in the past, we just had after-school programming because we had it, anybody could, we need numbers. This time, we're trying to be as focused and intentional as possible. So that's why it's a very concise program. Uh, two, two classrooms per grade level, students selected by, um, by their data on both the NWA and where they are with IER.
And, um, just one last question, uh, the students with IEPs, so how are you guys working it out?
So students with IEPs will be a little different. Those will be based on the services that we can provide after-school and recommendations from the classroom teacher as well as the principal. So we want to make sure that all the students with IEPs receive the services that they need in a small setting.
And would no, would they be, uh, the first on the list?
Not necessarily, no.
Why is that?
Depending on their need, their instructional need. Not every student with IEP has, uh, some, uh, severe instructional need.
Gotcha.
But remember, we're also not targeting the most severe.
I'm not speaking as severe, but I'm saying the most needed.
So that, that's what I'm speaking of. We're not targeting the lowest of the lowest of the low. That's not what our goal is. Our goal is to target that, we call it the bubble, that group of kids that really just need that extra push. That's the group of kids, honestly, that gets left out. Because usually we focus all of our attention on the bottom of the bottle. So we're focusing on that bubble group because they're right there on the cusp. If we can provide them the intensive support, we can push them over. Uh, and then we can start working on the next group.
Me as a parent, well, I'm just saying, if I was a parent and I feel like I want to have my, my son or my daughter in it, that, uh, to give them, help them, you know, and they have an IEP, where I have that opportunity to be able to put my child in after-school program.
We will always try to accommodate the needs of any parent with special requests. But as Dr. Alexander mentioned, because we're doing a smaller scale-down direct instructional support for those students that we feel that we can make the biggest impact in the time that we have, we will always, again, take into consideration every area, every need of a student. And most students will be turned away, we will do our best to accommodate those needs.
One question, how is the selection process of teachers? I see that you said recommendation. Are they filled out an application, and then from there you would get the application, see what, what teachers apply? So what's the selection process, especially for the three parents? So how does that go?
So there is an application process that's done through H R, and the selection process will be done by the principals. And based, again, not all teachers are going to apply.
Of course.
And so we have some who apply each year, and those, and some of those teachers are considered. Um, but again, the, the process will be done with H R and the school principals.
Is Grant Lee correct?
Yes.
Should we tie it?
Tie it on, please, okay.
So if the teacher has been here the longest, but say for a teacher, instance, the teacher was here for fifteen years and they applied, but they're not, they probably wouldn't be efficient. We have some of those, they probably wouldn't be efficient, but due to the fact that they was here fifteen years, would you select that teacher?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Arreling contract does not, and, and I jumped in to say that. Arreling contract does not have a seniority provision in it. Um, it used to, uh, but it does not have a seniority provision in it, so your time of service does not dictate a job.
Thank you.
I have a question, I think it's great that you are structuring on the kids in a small setting, and they are getting, they are learning. Now, my next, uh, question is about the crafting part, so we're not having the sewing or their acting?
Not this year.
Okay.
So will that happen next year or not this, in this particular window? And then after March, the testing, will we pick that up to try to have that?
So our after-school programming ends in March.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's as far as we go. We go to, right to the testing window, and then that's the end of it. So, uh, our focus is academics in after-school. Academic, um, intervention to provide those students a test support. And then to make it appealing to get kids that will come, that's what we add in the enrichment. So once the, uh, once we end in March, that's the end of, uh, after-school programming, yes. So this program, this cycle will take us an entire year, it's not a first semester, second semester.
So what's the sports included, just basketball and what?
We have track, cross-country, uh, basketball.
They doing cross-country after-school? I mean, I know it's all been spoken, but. No, no, I'm just trying to see, cause this is the after-school, so.
Well, they're still going.
Yeah, they're still.
After-school will start, uh, September thirteenth, thirtieth, yes. So next week, we could, we have to, so cross-country will still be going.
So how's the setup that, okay, within that timeframe, I'm going to the academic and then I'm going to sports?
So we restructured our program because we had too many competing interests. So sports are Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. Academics are Tuesday and Thursdays. In the, in the past, we've only operated after-school Monday through Thursday. But for Calumet to give them that extra practice time, will allow them to do it on Friday. But our general after-school program.
You said Monday, Wednesday and Friday was for, for academic or sports?
Sports. So it's, that's just for Calumet, that's just for Calumet.
And not the academic when we're alone?
So our, our after-school program is taking, is truly only four days, Monday through Thursday.
So they going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday for academic?
No, no, no.
So that's.
Only for the two schools.
So Burrow and Burrow Academy, they have three days of academics, one day of enrichment. Calumet, they have two days of enrichment, three days of athletics. Here's the reality behind that. Um, our athletic teams are actually pretty good. We've gone to regions, we've gone to states. We've gone to regions, we've gone to state, both basketball, cross country and track. They just don't have enough practice time. So our after school program historically has never been on Friday. So we're still keeping the same four day model, but we're allowing the kids to have Friday as an extra practice day.
And we just need it, they need it.
I understand the need, but, um, it's the need that they, you know, with the academic part and the push. Cause we are low. If you look at IAR, keep fingers crossed, and we got some games, right? Last year we was at two percent and that was in math. So to take, uh, that to be in academic and not with the sports, I understand about the practice.
Teacher after school on Friday.
Absolutely not. But however, you can have three days in the week for academic. And on Fridays they can do sports, those kids can stay after school. But two days for academic and we already low?
And, and here's the thing. You have students that, that look for that and that's their incentive to do better in, in the classroom. So you have to give them that. You know, with the sports, with the sports that, yeah.
I'm not taking away sports. I was just saying add another day to the academics and two days to the sports, just like the other schools. Because we are low. If we talk about data and look at data, when they give us the data report, we are low. And are we gonna stay low because we wanna do sports? Now if they sports and they don't know how to read or write, then why are we? Because they doing the sports and taking away the academic piece.
So it's, what we're doing this year is really no different than we've done before. It's two days of enrichment, two days of academics. Friday is a new day we're adding. Teachers will not work after school on Friday. However, your coaches, they're there on Friday. Uh, our track and field, across country, they're on Saturday. So that's different. But when we talk about academics, I mean, it was, it was a struggle. First of all, here's another part. You're not going to get kids to commit to your program without some level of an incentive.
And that's true.
So that's where the, the sports part comes in.
Of course.
And we're targeting our athletes because in the past, our athletes couldn't go to tutoring because they had to go to practice on the same day that they had academics. So again, my focus is academics. However, I do recognize that we need more practice time, uh, for the students to be, to do their athletics. So that was the compromise.
So Dr. Alexander, can you, I mean, is there any ways that you can go back and kinda add it, work something out? Uh, would there be teachers you think that would be, um, you know, willing to, to do that extra?
On Friday? I don't think, I personally do not think, and I don't think my administrators would agree. And Friday is not an effective.
Teachers are not gonna do academic, their grades don't haunt. However, Monday through Thursday, Monday through Thursday. We, if, if it's three days and two days and the athletes take Friday, then we need to do three days. I understand what you're saying, you're pushing the sports, but we're pushing the academic. We're never gonna excel that we say, okay, I think, uh, sports is more important or the priority than the academic piece. So that's all I'm saying with that. Again, I, I'm not negating with you or anything what you said. But the only thing is as far as here, if the other schools got three days and two, give us the same thing. Cause we need that academic piece.
And the reason that the other schools have three days is because we don't have organized sports in kindergarten.
May I say something, please? I'm gonna have to agree with you here. We are behind. Three days, I don't think it's worth it. She's not saying take away Friday. She just said add another day for academic. That's all she was saying.
For Calumet.
And I don't agree with her.
So is it possible that you can work something out and give those three days to Calumet? Give them three days of tutoring and interventions?
So we would have to re, we would have to rework the budget. Because, uh, addition, so we, our academic people only work two days. That's Tuesday and Thursday. So our teachers, uh, that budget is programmed based on two days. So we would have to rework the budget and then make sure that we, uh, we may have to rewrite our grant because essentially we would have to find more money.
So, so this, so that was based on the grant that you, who, who wrote it?
Our district grants, yes, our title one.
So can't you just add one more day, one more teacher to that, to this?
Well, if not, there's fourteen more teachers. Well, no, not fourteen, six teachers at Calumet.
So in other words, we get that money for sports, but we might not get the fine money to get more teachers to act.
No, that's, that's not what I'm saying. It's just shit. So let, let me be very clear. I'm not saying that this program is to magnify sports. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is we added a day outside of our programming for sports. Our program has always been four days.
But we're not trying to take it away.
No, you, you know what I'm saying? Our program has been four days. Two days the enrichment, two days academics.
Yeah, can I just make?
Go ahead.
This is just a comment. All right. So for the middle school, they're getting, um, art, music and engineering. That is academics. Because in music, you're still, you're working with mathematics, right? In art, you're still working with literacy. You're looking at, that's also mathematics when you're looking at some of your art. Um, in engineering, you know, it's science and math and technology, right? So you're still getting academics. You're not, um, I don't see sports on there at all for, uh, except, I guess Friday would be the sport today for middle school, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, I'm just making that comment, all right?
Thank you. But I, so, well, real quick, the math and reading portion, are we doing any of that? Looking at this enrichment activity, it's only art, music and engineering? So we're not focusing on math and reading?
That's, so remember it's two parts, the academic.
That's what I was asking.
Yes. So it's just, the content is broken up. We're trying to make it fun for the student while they learn. And we want the kids to actually come.
So, okay, so we have a, you know.
Okay, David, I have a question. I have a question. Okay, well, it's the same thing you're talking about. Calumet Middle School instructional enrichment format. It says Tuesdays and Thursdays core instruction, which will include reading and math. And Monday, Wednesday and Friday organized sports. There's the whole week right there. So what is the problem?
There's no problems.
You wanna change three of the days for?
All I was saying is.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about. You already have said Friday. He's saying, no, we can't do Friday, Friday.
No, Friday is the sports.
Organized sports. Friday is organized sports. So Monday and Wednesday would be the art, music and engineering. I mean, Monday and Wednesday would be the art, music and engineering. And Friday is the only day that they have to organize sports. Am I correct on that?
The way that it says Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Friday.
Okay, can I, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Golar. Oh, he motioned.
He motioned.
Can I get a second? Ms. Brown, come on. Go ahead.
All right, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Dixon? Okay, Golar?
Yes.
Kimro?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Dory?
No, that's, we prioritize sports. I'm just wanting to go right.
Yes, yes.
Yes, you are.
All right, thank you. So public comments. If you intend to speak, please follow completely a questions and comments forum and present to the superintendent secretary at his time. The board will be prepared to address those comments related to the agenda within the reasonable time. However, the comments may be forwarded to the superintendent for an individual response. No other discussion or actions will be taken place. Please refrain, remain in your seats until you are recognized by the president. Every person intending to speak must come to the podium to state their comments. Please state your name, comments will be limited to three minutes.
All right, first up is Ms. James. We have two, first up is Ms. James.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So, um, I have like two things. My son wants to speak on behalf of a teacher at PIS. And there's a thing, I don't know if anybody knows about this slapboxing that they're doing in the bathroom? They are having slapboxing matches in the bathroom and they are recording it. My nephew is on that slapboxing, actually this week in the bathroom. They are slapping each other up in these bathrooms. So I'm trying to figure out what can be done about monitoring when they have these bathroom like breaks.
What school?
Here, Calumet. Yeah, they, they're.
So we, we need to be refraining, so no one is monitoring. We, we need to be refraining here. Allow her to speak, go ahead.
And the other thing is, um, I want to say that I feel that there's like a spirit of educational suppression here. Not just in the school, but in the entire village. There's no transparency and it's hard for growth to take place when there's the suppression. I'm speaking on behalf of my son, Price, who is now a freshman at, uh, Richards High School. So Price was when he was like in the fourth grade, they were talking about civic immigrant. Well, for some reason, something happened within this administration that they shot it down. Since then, Price has been doing the bare minimum to get by, just to graduate from here. So I just want you all to know that Price is at Richards and he is now being moved into the honors classes because he's able to grow. He's able to feel like he's supported in an environment that supports the type of learning and the type of child that he is. So I do believe that something needs to happen within these walls, not just within these walls, but within this community to stop the suppression of the people. Because it's about we, the people. Whether it's a child, whether it's a senior, whether it's a middle aged person, we all have a voice and we should all be heard. And that's it. And I guess I gotta give my son.
Yeah, yeah, what he tells us, we'll get it.
Okay. Uh, and how's that being timed?
This, we're good. So, uh, the next one is, there's actually three. So the next one is, uh, Ms. Ebanks. Diane McKenzie?
Yes. Hello, um, hi, my name is Diane McKenzie. I actually, I've been listening. Um, I'm gonna say what I felt, um, with the first. I understand that you all are really concerned about the children and how they're doing. I, my background is healthcare. I have taught at the college level, but I'm listening and I'm feeling stressed out. I can only imagine how the teachers are. So don't, in addition to waiting to the customers, as the kids, don't forget that the teachers are people and there's intersectionality with all of this. Um, one of my concerns, which I do appreciate, is that you were able to get teachers from out of the country. And kids need ways to get opportunities to expose them to different ways of learning and to be. My concern is, is that how are they being supported? You want them to stay, you want them to talk. And like I said, I'm in healthcare and I'm just, teachers talk too, we all talk. You want this to be a place that people want to work. That they want to stay, that they want to feel invested and that there is results. I'm hearing, I'm hearing metrics and everything, yes. I really do believe taking the phones away will give you some of the results that you see. It's just going to take time. Also, I mentioned here with the, the sports, I didn't hear him say he prioritized sports over education. Kids are in school all day long. You cannot burn them out. All right, so there's so much going on, it's affecting morale. So morale is bad up here, it's certainly more bad on the teachers. Things slow down here. So what I would like to say is be patient, also you will see what you need to see. But you have to give it time. And also to encourage you all to listen to each other, cause I'm sitting back here, you all don't like listening to each other at all. That is unacceptable. You can't hold kids to the same standard that you're not doing yourselves to. Do that. I know you all are trying, I see it, I've worked. I've been in this community over thirty years. I've had to come back for other reasons and I'm seeing it now, that you all are on the same page, but listen to each other. Give yourselves a chance. You all are doing so much so that everybody's overwhelmed. Like I said, I'm overwhelmed, I know the parents are overwhelmed. I think what a lot of parents want to know is how can we support you all? Support the teachers so that we can support your children? It used to be a PTA, I haven't heard anything more about the PTA. You're talking to parent volunteers. So I guess I'm looking for some more accountability. And like I said, I, I just really felt, I'm a nurse, like I said, healthcare. We get dumped off a lot, a lot. I don't wanna see that happen to the teachers.
Diane, you can take my three minute, third with Aunt Jackie in her bathroom with what you're getting from.
Well, that's, okay, well, that's also the concern.
She can take my three minutes. Ah, ah, three minutes.
Well, you want to get your picture paper. Well, that, that goes, both names are on the paper. Calling both of us names. It's enough to fly through two separate papers. We have just put both names on one.
That's not how it goes and so will be fine.
Okay, well, I address that with the teachers, especially the new teachers, what kind of support that they're getting. You're gonna have Jackie at the hall because I have an idea. Sometimes it's difficult of just words.
So did that say?
We don't mind, uh, are we carrying?
Did she have, did she write her?
Her paper was online. Okay, paper was online.
So if you want, da, 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 can talk with you. Uh, if there's something about your individual child, we don't want to expose her here in the open.
It's fine. So like I said, I addressed it about support for the new teachers. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one last visitor comment. It is, uh, Mr. James. Mr. James.
So he's a little nervous on that. Well, to address that young lady about the Parent Teachers Association? Well, we did try to have one, but the school board president shot that down. And so I don't know, you know, if they're gonna try to do it again. But anyway, Josiah is speaking on behalf of his teachers.
All right, so my name is Josiah James. I'm in seventh grade. And today I wanna talk about, to see if I can get my seventh grade science teacher back because like, I feel like he was very helpful. And like we can learn more. That he's like, now that he's gone, we got this new teacher. She's from Nigeria. Her name is Ms. Keshofa. And I feel like when her in the classroom, we don't learn anything. And like, we learn the same thing every day, it's nothing new. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, new business? For your updates, John?
Yes, we've had since last month, more meeting, we've only had one and that's been resolved.
Thank you.
That's impactful.
Thank you very much. Four reports, anyone wants to speak?
I just wanted to say, um, as far as with the teachers, with, they're trying to do their best. And I do understand about self-care. And, um, I'm pretty sure that, I'm almost certain that you all have something about self-care was on the docket to have. As far as the academic piece, and I'm so passionate about the data and where we are because we are very, very, very low. But we just put it out there. I never stated that, um, well, I stated about the priority. And it is very, very important to have, right, um, sports, it is, because teachers get burned out. But also as far as with just the academic piece, because students are very, very low. And you will find that some students really, really wants to, they want to learn. And even pulling them out of, uh, I'll just say, for example, a seventh grader not knowing how to read and they read at third grade level. You pull that student out so they won't be embarrassed and they'll be happy to read, the sun is shining. So I'm just saying, just the academic piece and where we are going in the room. Cause we got AI, we got all of these different things. And reading is very, very fundamental, because everywhere you go, you will see reading and you will see math. You gotta learn how to count, because when the computer shut down, you have to know how to count. So to the administrative team, keep up the good work. I know I may ask you a lot of questions, but keep up the good work. And to the staff who's here, keep up the good work. As far as the parents, keep coming. Keep letting us know your, um, comments and your concerns. We listen. We listen, we listen. And even when we leave here, we go back like, yeah, I heard, uh, yeah, I could have not said that, I heard this. So we do go back and reflect. So to Alexander, we listen, but some things, I know you're supposed to pretend it, but for some things we do listen. So you all keep up the good work, everybody. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I have a few shout outs myself. I'm gonna shout out to Brown, um, and your assistant principal. I see you guys out there every day, getting these kids out the car. You have made traffic so much better, let me say that to you. I commend you. You give, the kids are happy to see you guys when they come into the door. Uh, they just, even, um, your assistant principal, what's her name, my secretary?
Rhythm?
Really? She was out there in a one-laded wheel. You gave, I thought, like, that's the only way I could put it. Every day, I mean, every day, and now she is, she's standing up on a boot. And she's out there, and the kids love her.
The gentleman in the back, um, right.
Really?
I commend you as well, I've seen you out there directing traffic. Couldn't understand it, but I saw you out there doing your thing, and you do an excellent job as well. And I wanna thank you, because you made it. Now, I don't see you out there directing traffic anymore, but I do see you standing outdoors greeting the kids. And I, I commend you with that, because I feel like this, our kids, when we come, when they come here, they should have someone greeting them, making them feel good. They, I mean, you guys, they be looking forward to this, you know, just, and especially you. I just, and you do more than you, you both, you do, and I commend you, okay?
Ms. Brown, go ahead.
Okay, the parent part, I did recommend to the superintendent about having parents in the school volunteering, because it's so important that students see parents, and they, their behavior changes, because they don't know who's gonna go tell their parents about what they're doing. And they really, that parent part, they see what's going on, and what's, you know, what's working and what may not be working. And they will meet, and they will discuss it, because their children are important. And I love the idea of having parents in the school, because it makes a big difference, because some schools, some students feel as though, it's this so-and-so over there, I can talk with her if they can't talk with the teacher, because the teacher might be a little busy. But if they see a parent that they know, they feel comfortable, and they feel like, there's another person I can go to, instead of just waiting for my teacher or an administrator. So, I, I'm in favor of parents being in the school. So, we should see in the future, you know, what happens. Because when I was working, uh, my parents, they worked, but they did get a stipend. And so, that did, you know, that kind of enticed them, but I'm not saying that should happen here, because the way the money is, the money situation is. But if a parent wants to volunteer for an hour or two in school, they can sit with another student, you know, a student that teacher might help, uh, need help with, that needs to learn, read, or do the math, because sometimes they just need that one extra person in their life.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm gonna press, I gotta say one more thing. Well, no, I, let Ms. Brown go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that she needed to say.
Well, everybody's given it.
Okay.
And I, I will be short, except yay, I love hearing from students, um, and hope that we could hear from more students and parents. Uh, and my only thing was, I'm not gonna say Hispanic, 'cause I, it just happened, happy that day, Mom. Uh, I'm looking forward to our celebration, um, and congratulations, I would say again, to the staff, uh, faculty for, uh, the pulling up of this space. Um, I hope that, um, dreams that are in it can come true.
You get my turn?
Yes, I also would like to say, I do commend the hard work, and you guys show that each and every day. I also would like to say, um, that mental health is very, very important. And I do agree with, uh, here, yeah, uh, in terms of mental health and burnout, because it, it really is real, and it's alive and kicking. So, um, being able to come down from that sometimes and have something else on, on your, on, in your head, it makes a difference a lot of times, so just keep that in mind. Me especially.
Hi, my name's Mo Golar. I'm sorry I was like this today, I was coming from a life during class, but you spoke very well, um, in concerns with, with the teachers, we're talking about, like that. Um, I am gonna be, wanna be with the assistant principals and principals. I started a program in the city of Chicago, uh, that I think helped out very well. Uh, we were giving free controls to the school areas and doing like a bunch of this, uh, emergency parentage training that I wanted to do, and we've been doing it all for free here, so I'm bringing to the Calumet Park School District. We want the try-down. We had a try-down, I'm sure, if you guys seen me, somebody questioned. We had to try it out in the city first, because the city have, uh, gave us a firehouse up the street from here, and so it's moving, field trips and everything, uh, coming to that, coming to that station, so I just wanna talk to the principal back there. Um, I see you guys out there, that's me and the rescue truck going on, uh, to assist the principal, in case you guys get them. So, I think you guys are doing a very good job.
And, um, I just wanna also say, I commend and I thank the administrators for doing the job that you guys do. Um, Ms. Brown, unfortunately, she isn't here, but she gave ice cream social, and I had the opportunity to see those kids. We're assuming all of those sugars, and, uh, but they had fun, and so that's what the kids need, um, you know. And I know that we do push for education, and I'm for one, that's for it, but also, they do need downtime. They do need downtime. And so, uh, what better way to reward them is to allow them to get that downtime. Um, I know that they also had a, a thing called, uh, one night it up? Mr. Gray?
Glow party.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm all, okay, I'm sorry. Glow party? I said light it up. Way over, okay, but. The kids, they had so much fun, um, and they had necklaces, glasses, you know, just seeing them, and that, we've never had that before. Um, and that's something that, again, the mental health, the health of those kids. I don't know what they go through at home, you know, I don't know what they go through day-to-day. I do see the kids hanging around and whatnot, but when they come to school, they are loving it. Um, but I do appreciate all that you guys do. Uh, wanna also say thanks to, uh, I cannot think of your name, but.
Natalie.
The lunch manager?
Natalie.
Natalie, Miss Natalie. The food is phenomenal. I, I, I stopped and talked with you before, I, I even asked about the menu, because I've heard some of the kids, they really enjoying food. It's totally different, it's completely, it's really good. Um, it's almost like they eating at home. So, uh, I really appreciate that. Um, but again, I appreciate the district movement in the way it does. Uh, for the teachers, listen, this, keep the course, stay the course, trust the process, please. Administrators, keep your staff encouraged, keep your teachers encouraged. Um, they're people too, they're people, and they need that, that, uh, that time to reflect and to get their selves together and just, you know, uh, have an easy going, uh, day. But, uh, I really appreciate you guys again, and just wanna let you know, I just had, also, just let you know, tell me real quick. So, my daughter is in the Montana Journal in an academy, um, they did a article on her. And so, if you ever wanna, uh, just read about what she had done, um, and she's a product of this district. And, uh, Paris Harris, uh, jumped, daring to leap, it's in the Montana Journal. Uh, they did a whole article on her, um, because she was fighting fires. I didn't think anybody believed me, to be honest with you. Uh, because it's just not for a nineteen-year-old to support their fight some forest fighters. But one of here, our students, that's a product of one thirty-two, that's doing well, that had the, the challenges or what have you, but she came from this district, so it can happen. So, uh, but I appreciate you guys coming out tonight, and, um, and we look forward to seeing you next month. Um, so, John, uh, we're gonna motion to close session. Motion by Mr. Golar, second? Second by Ms. Brown. Roll call, John.
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried at eight twenty-one PM.
Thank you. Okay, uh, may I have a motion to reconvene?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Golar and second by Ms. Dixon? Roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yep.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion reconvened at nine thirty-three PM.
Okay, um, for approval, uh, A two? You have a motion? Moved by Ms. Brown, second?
Second.
Ms. Dixon, roll call, John?
I'm sorry, A two, Brown and then Dixon, right?
Yes.
Okay, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Oh, yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Item A two, carry.
And, uh, approval of Thornton Township Treasurer's Office suggested motion, we are hereby, we are hereby move that the Board of Education appoints Consoil the Brown to serve on behalf of Calumet Public School District One Thirty-two as trustee of Calumet Township trustees of the school board, as presented, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Story?
Second.
Second by Mr. Golar. Roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Story, second by Mr. Golar. Roll call, John?
Okay, Brown? Dixon?
Yes.
Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
No, no, I'm just kidding. Yes, yes, yes! For the record, yes!
Motion carried at nine thirty-five PM.